All right, we're going to get going. We had already called the meeting to order and then went to executive session, which we just adjourned. So next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. Next is to review and approve the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the April 3rd, 2023 agenda? Brendan, second? Phil, all in favor? Unanimous? Next is approval of the March 2020, 23 minutes. Can I get a motion? Erica, second? Brendan, all in favor? It's unanimous? Onto comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. I would just ask that people state their name and the street that they live on. Any public comments? All right, none. Onto reports and recognition, and first up is the high school science update.
Thank you. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Michael Laduke, who is the Science Department Chair at the high school, who will be giving you an update on the district goal in regards to science. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael, who I think thought he was off the hook this evening, but we made it back in within the 10-minute rule, Michael, so you're on.
Very excited to be with all of you tonight. I think... If we're lucky, I'll get everyone home by halftime, so... No, I think this is, this is great. I'm really excited to present today because on these special occasions, you can remember where you were and what you were doing when, when special things happened. And you're always going to remember, I was your opening act for UConn playing for their, for their fifth title. So here we are. I'm going to present on, on the science update, the science-related goals. So as a refresher here, goal number one, objective three is related to science. So tonight, I'm going to walk you through our progress towards those goals. I'll review the next generation science standards, give you a quick refresher on, on what's encompassed within those standards, and walk you through how we design curriculum based on those standards, and then a quick update on each of our four core courses that have a specific sub-goal or sub-objective related to them. So first up, the next generation science standards are a rich and comprehensive set of standards that incorporates, I think, what we traditionally think of as science content, as science curriculum, and that would be the disciplinary core ideas. Those are the, the key facts and, and concepts that you probably remember from your, your science experiences. What makes the next generation science standards special and rich and meaningful is that they have embedded within the standards the science and engineering practices, which are the skills and activities that scientists regularly engage in. And those are the science and engineering practices, and then the cross-cutting concepts, which help to provide a lens to think about science in, in a way that goes across disciplines. So what does that look like in the classroom? It's, it's tied in with a lot of the work we've been doing at the high school, moving towards more of a student-centered approach within the classroom. So we're moving away from memorization of what would be just the disciplinary core ideas, and now things are more contextualized for students. So they're learning in context, in authentic ways, that helps to make it a more memorable experience for them. And then... It doesn't mean that the, the items in the left column are, are gone from science education. There's a time and a place for each of these things, right? There's still a time for whole-class instruction, though we're moving more towards small-group instruction and tailored education for the needs of each, each learner. When we write curriculum as a district, we use the understanding by design process, backwards design. And in this diagram here, I'll start with, in gray, we have understanding by design, which has three, three stages. We start by identifying the desired results. What do we want students to be able to do? And that's largely dictated by our state and national standards. From there, we determine how students can demonstrate that they're able to do those things. So we design our assessments and whatnot to, to prove that, or to, to show where students are in their ability to accomplish those desired results. And lastly, we design a learning plan where students will be able to apply their knowledge in a novel way to, to meet the identified desired results. Now, for the next generation science standards, the connection is that the desired results are the performance expectations for NGSS. So NGSS is packaged into performance expectations about what students are able to do. So we take those performance expectations and carve them up and put them in meaningful units of study for students so that over the course of their high school experience, they work towards each of those performance expectations. From there, for stage two, we determine how we're going to assess students to make sure that they're able to do those things. And lastly, design a learning plan to help guide students towards being able to master those performance expectations. All right, so I know it looks very concise, concise and neat here, but we're going to take a, a deeper dive into just one of these smaller topics within the physical science realm. So physical science is what we largely think of as chemistry and physics and some aspects of earth science. And we're going to dive into waves and electromagnetic radiation a little more in-depth here. Within that one topic statement of waves and electromagnetic radiation, we've got five performance expectations. And these are dense, three-dimensional statements about what students can do. When I say three-dimensional, I'm referring to it incorporates a science and engineering practice, a disciplinary core idea, and a cross-cutting concept into each of those statements. So if we look at the first one, students will use mathematical representations to support a claim regarding relationships among the frequency, wavelength, and speed of waves traveling through various media. We have clarification statements that add some depth to that, and we have an assessment boundary, so limiting the extent to which we would expect students in high school at the grade level to be able to, to master. All right, I've highlighted three of them, three of these performance expectations, because those are three that are covered in the same unit of study in one of our chemistry courses. So we'll dive into that a little more deeply here. Continuing along with those performance expectations, if you scroll down on the, where the, the standards are accessible, you can see it goes way in-depth into each of these science and engineering practices, the relevant disciplinary core ideas, and the most pertinent cross-cutting concepts to be studied in this unit of study. I, I think you can see that the richness there with the level of expertise that we need from our, our educators in order to help design a curriculum that accomplishes each of these aspects of NGSS. All right, we can also see that these structures, or sorry, these standards, I know I've said this before, I think they're beautifully structured in that they're so well-articulated from K to 12. So in this portion of the standards, we can see how the disciplinary core ideas relate to other disciplinary core ideas across high schools. So we can see it relates to the Earth and Space Science standards in these specific areas. And we can also see how it is articulated with the middle school standards as well. And lastly, it connects to, of course, the common core standards, because math is the language of science and we communicate it in English. So those are relevant for our, our, our aspects here as well. And then the last component of the standards, these are called evidence statements, and these are a little bit more digestible ways of looking at what students are able to do. So this is just for one of those three performance expectations that I was going to highlight. This is a set of statements that can help you design assessments for students and design a curricula in a way that shows that students are able to do what we're saying that they can do. All right, so these are those, those three we're going to dive into here. So this is an example of what this might look like in the classroom. So this is one of our phenomenon, one of our anchoring ideas that we use, one of our anchoring activities for our, one of our chemistry units. So in this, in this unit, students are familiar with glow sticks, and we, we have them do essentially a glow stick reaction in the classroom. So you can see students there mixing two different compounds and having a chemical reaction that creates, that emits light. And from there, we give students a variety of different glow sticks. They can snap them, see the different colors, observe what's going on, and they're going to show their initial understanding in a model. So they're going to say what they, they're going to diagram what they see at the macroscopic level, and then what they think is going on at the microscopic level. So this is going to tap into their prior knowledge, things they've learned in, in middle school, things they've learned in their other science courses. And this is a chance to tie back to those previous learning experiences and potentially identify misconceptions and areas for students to grow. We don't expect students to do a perfect first model. In fact, well, I don't know why we would teach it if they had a perfect first model. There's no room for growth. So this is a spot to, to really find what students do and, and don't understand, and for them to, to really work on those metacognitive skills. So in order to understand what happens in a glow stick, it's a remarkably complex set of reactions, and to understand it at a, at a molecular level takes a, a deep level of understanding. And that's what makes for a rich phenomenon in, in this case. So we start with this, and this is what guides about a month of study for students. So they're tying back to this phenomenon in order to build a rich understanding. So following this activity, there's going to be classroom activities and simulations and virtual labs and in-person labs and group work and modeling and all these activities to help them build that deeper understanding. Students don't know a whole lot about light and electromagnetic radiation at this point. So we do a lot of work with that, modeling it mathematically to show how frequency and wavelength are related, how it ties to the speed of light. We look at the dual nature of light or the wave-particle duality, and they look at the experiments that Einstein had done to help expose that knowledge and help build our conceptual understanding that we use to this day. Students use various models to help understand this. That includes the Bohr model and the quantum model, which both have their strengths, and students learn about the strengths and weaknesses of these various models and when they're applicable and when they're not. And ultimately, they come to the understanding that when these complex reactions happen, energies released by the reaction, those electrons become excited, they change energy levels, and as they fall back to their original energy levels, they emit predictable patterns of light. And we use that understanding to do a variety of things, including when we look at the stars, we can tell what the composition, the chemical composition of those stars would be based on the emission spectra of light that comes back from those stars. I know there's a lot, don't need to understand it for now, but know that this is a rich understanding that our students are getting in this, in this program of, of study. And then ultimately, we want students to transfer this knowledge to a new context. And so we have them on their assessment, for example, they tie this to fireworks. And so it's something they haven't quite talked about, but they've done a flame test in class. They see how the flames work and how the colors work in those contexts, and they're able to apply it to a new context. So one unit of study might be comprised of just three really rich performance expectations. And we can see here they would move on to, you know, subsequent units that cover different performance expectations so that over the course of their core science experience at the high school, they've worked towards all of the, all of the performance expectations associated with NGSS. So if we zoom back out here to the, the big picture of, of science at the high school, the topics are, are carved up into our four, our key core courses. So most of our freshmen start in geophysical science, they move to biology in either ninth or 10th grade, chemistry in 10th or 11th grade, and physics in 11th or 12th grade. And there's definitely a lot of overlap in these different standards, and as you can, you saw when we looked at the standards, they're very, they can be very dense. And so it takes a lot of time to get into, to each of these at a, at a rich level. Now, our electives will also go into aspects of these, more focused on different disciplinary content, but with the same emphasis on the science and engineering practices and the cross-cutting concepts. So in all of our courses at the high school, especially our core courses, they're driven by these phenomenon-driven events, phenomenon-driven storylining curriculum. So that's, would be like we saw with the, with the glow stick lab. What's excellent about this is that it promotes contextualized learning, more system-level thinking for students, and they're doing more of, more figuring out and less learning about. So it's, it's more authentic for them. We have a variety of practices that are used across our courses. For example, look, a claim, evidence, reasoning-style conclusion utilizes, it requires students to utilize a lot of those disciplinary core ideas. Sorry, it requires them to use a lot of the science and engineering practices to speak to different disciplinary core ideas. We use understanding by design for writing all of our curriculum, and we come back to those DCIs at deeper levels when, when it connects back to our, to our curriculum. All right, so the first sub-goal here was related to geophysical science. Geophysical science was first launched in 2019. It replaced the pre-existing earth science course. So this course was designed around the Earth and Space Science disciplinary core ideas for NGSS. It's a great starting spot for our students. Roughly 60% of the freshman class takes this course, and it sets them up nicely for success in biology, chemistry, and physics. And so our first launch of that was 2019. That group that first took the course actually just took the NGSS assessment in 11th grade this past school year. And it was one of our stronger years, which I think is a testament to the, the implementation of this course and how, how well it's gone so far. We saw growth in, in all three of our dimensions of NGSS, and students liked the course. We had a, and we do an end-of-the-year questionnaire, and students were very positive about, about their experiences, and it set them up very nicely for their, their subsequent experiences. The only changes we're doing here is in stage three of the UBD, we're changing some of the learning plan to meet the needs of students. If we're finding that maybe they didn't accomplish a specific subset of a, of a performance expectation as well as we would like, we can modify the learning plan a little bit to get more detail in different, different areas. Biology, their goal is to continue implementing and reviewing revised biology units of study with an emphasis on best practices with NGSS. So we first implemented storylines in biology towards the end of last school year. And so students experienced a little more of a traditional curriculum earlier in the year and transitioned to a storylining curriculum in the spring. And what was excellent about this little case study is that those students had multiple experiences for how a classroom can function. And they were largely positive about their experience and what they... Enjoying the style of a storylining curriculum much more. So some of the quotes from students here, I think, is much in line with the work we're doing from the Innovation Committee. There's a lot of students forming their own ideas, expressing themselves more creatively. Different ideas and perspectives, more self-discovery, learning in different ways, seeing it as more engaging and fun, and more freedom and creativity in the classroom. Chemistry is implementing revised units of study. We've seen a change in how inclusive our science courses have been as we've become, as we've moved more towards these storylining curricula. So we have a couple of interesting phenomenon here. The one, the picture on the bottom left, students are using a solar panel to collect energy from, actually a light bulb, which then splits water into hydrogen and oxygen through electrolysis. And then students can use that hydrogen and oxygen to recombine it in a fuel cell and generate electricity. So they can see the transformation of energy into different forms, and it really gets their attention. It's something that I hope we see more and more of these fuel cell cars in their lifetime. And so it's, it's, it's applicable for them and something that really gets their attention. We're implementing more lab exams in this course as well. So students in their stoichiometry unit of study are, they conduct a, a reaction where it creates a gas. And one of the easy and fun ways to observe the production of the gas is using balloons attached to those flasks there. So you can see very quickly how much gas was produced. And it's a crude but effective measurement for how much gas is produced and how much of a reaction has occurred. So our lab exams really force students to use their science and engineering practices in showing their, their understanding. In our physics curriculum, we updated our physics textbook from an older edition to a newer edition in this past school year. And it has a much stronger connection to the performance expectations of NGSS, our, our previous edition, predated NGSS. So it was a, a nice update for us, and it has much more digital support. And it has much more digital supports for students as well. So it was a great addition for our students. The physics class is much more visual and tangible and relies more on mathematical and computational thinking as, as probably the most dominant science and engineering practice for that course. And since our students spend two to three years working on the physical science standards, they're able to go far beyond the assessment boundaries of the performance expectations when they get to our, our physics course. All right, next steps. We're all very excited about the dome. I think once we have it in front of us and get trained on it, we'll know even more ways that we can leverage it to support student learning in exciting and meaningful ways. So really looking forward to the fall and getting in there. Of course, we're going to continue to look at more innovative lab activities that we can introduce, introduce our students to. For example, that the, the fuel cell and electrolysis lab that I showed during the chemistry slide, that's something we've only started doing in the last two years. So that's, that's a new one for us and something that we're hoping to continue introducing more activities like that. And lastly, we want to continue to, to provide offerings that meet the needs of our students and pushes them to be engaged and successful and potentially pursuing something in, in college or, or life otherwise. So some of the courses we're considering would be a biomimicry and engineering course, a vertebrate zoology course or environmental toxicology, but we need to find more about what the students are interested in, how we can best meet their needs. And other next steps, go Huskies. I think that's important. And, and that's what I have for you tonight. Questions?
Brendan?
Thanks for that presentation. It was great. So there are, at least as I remember, learning science, there's all, there are a ton of facts to understand before you can get up to the higher levels, even if you're, you know, doing, you know, experiments all the time and kind of learning by yourself. So is there a world where we sort of completely get away from, you know, learning about the periodic table and like, you know, those sorts of things as a baseline at the beginning of the school year or, you know, middle school or whatever and all of the learning or substantially all the learning is, you know, essentially by doing and, you know, testing and, and going through all that?
We have a lot of tools such as the periodic table that are essential and helping students to build their understanding of, of chemistry, for example. We're not going to move away from introducing those, but they're becoming increasingly contextualized in how students learn. So I think previously, students might have learned about the formula for calculating frequency or wave, sorry, frequency or wavelength relative to speed of light and then gone into a unit on light. And as you saw in our, our little demo unit there, it's contextualized. So they're more engaged in wanting to understand how the frequency of light causes these different colors. And so it's, it's more meaningful when it's in context. Teaching students to use those tools is of course important and it will always be, to some extent, there'll be some front-loading there, but increasingly contextualized.
Can you talk more about the phenomenon and how you select them if you're still sort of trying out, because there, there would seem to me be lots of options and some are going to fit what you're trying to teach better than others. And I'm wondering where you are in that process. And I, I see it's mostly discussed at the high school level here, but I believe it's down all the way through, you know, at the, even at the elementary level, how you're selecting those phenomena.
So ideally, when we introduce one of these phenomenon, students are going to generate questions and we have different questioning protocols that students go through that are going to ultimately guide the curriculum. So when done really well, they're going to ask all the questions that then lead to the, you're setting down a breadcrumb trail for them that they're going to follow and then ultimately get to a deep understanding of the performance expectations. I'd say that's probably one of the trickiest, trickiest bits of this transition to NGSS is finding the, sorry, the, the phenomenon that's going to connect with the most students because the whole purpose is that it's engaging and contextualized. And so if it doesn't connect with the student, they don't particularly care about glow sticks, then it's tough to, to make it, to really stick. So that is something that we spend a lot of time working through. Sometimes, you know, I think one of the first storylines that I did was in a biology class and it had, well regardless, students didn't ask any of the questions that I thought they were going to ask. And they were great questions. But that was a good learning experience for me because we, we pivoted the next year and tried a different phenomenon and it was, it was much more successful. So you're right, selecting that phenomenon is, is one of the bigger challenges. And you're right that it is something that we do throughout the, the K to 12 learning experience at, at the high school, or sorry, at, in New Canaan.
Phil?
So you mentioned that 60% of freshmen take the geophysical science. Is it safe to say the, the other 40% take biology? Is that where they start or where, what are they taking when the 60% take the geophysical?
Some take honors geophysical science and then the remaining portion takes either biology or honors biology.
Okay. And what percentage of high schoolers end up taking physics? And I'm asking because, you know, back in my day in high school, a lot of kids never made it to physics because they started just, whether it was, you know, earth science or something else, they just never got the chance to do it. And I just, I, I wish that, that more kids had because I think physics is while sort of dry, very, very interesting to some. So I'm just curious whether, what percentage of kids actually get that exposure to it?
Yeah, I, I don't have that data for you on hand. I will say it's become more common for our students to take physics.
Oh, good.
In that the geophysical science course, we're incorporating a little bit more physics every year. And that's, I think in some students' mind, it's a big scary course that they're never going to be successful in. And if you, if they have a little bit of it in their freshman year, it becomes much more, they can envision themselves doing it. It's more manageable. And so we are seeing a lot of students get from geophysical science to, to physics. But that being said, there are some students who start in biology and go to chemistry and then they take, you know, A maybe AP chemistry or AP environmental science. And so physics, you know, we offer a lot of great courses and they can't take all of them. I mean, they could, but then they wouldn't get, they wouldn't get math, they wouldn't get English. And I'm, again, I'm not opposed to having them in science all day, but we have to have a nice balanced education for, for all of them.
Thank you.
Trina?
Thank you. I'm just, so just a question along the NGSS and also thinking about feedback you might be hearing from students interested that go on to pursue STEM in college or have that as a, you know, high area of interest in, in high school. I know we've heard from a lot of the kids that come back after, you know, they're freshmen for semester that they felt that the high school prepared them well for writing. So I'm thinking that, that you talk about the content connections with writing, you know, evidence and reasoning and making claims from a scientific perspective. I'm wondering where you think NGSS has fit into that and are there areas, other areas of feedback that we've heard from students coming back where either are opportunities for us or things that you think we're doing particularly well here?
Yeah. I, I think it's really consistent with what you, you see in, more in seminars and college and especially in, in the graduate level of science courses where they could be diving into a really specific phenomenon or studying a very specific topic, which guides the research into a whole bunch of different directions. So it's really, I think, in line with what scientists are doing. And that's because scientists designed the next generation science standards, scientists and educators and high school teachers. And so it, it was designed in a way to prepare students for success in, in studying science and beyond. So I haven't spoken with any recent science graduates about their experiences, but I think that's a good next step for us to do through, through our counseling department.
So I had a just question. So you had the slide up, kind of science education will involve less of this and more of some other things. You know, I, I'm just curious that for, with less textbook and less memorization, have you noticed, has that actually been hard for students that might be more like traditional book learners and test takers? Like have, have some students actually struggled with either more group work or, you know, open-ended question? Like I'm, I'm just curious how the, how kids have reacted.
Yeah, I, I think one of the great shifts in science education has been, the textbook used to be the driver of curriculum. Start in chapter one, go to chapter two, go to chapter three. And now we have it as a, as a supporting resource. So as we go through any of these different phenomenons or students are working towards a performance expectation, we can direct them to different supports as needed. So if, if they're struggling with myosis, that's section 26.2 of the textbook and we can help use that as a supporting resource. And one of the great things about textbooks now is that they have interactive questions. So if a student, if we direct them to 26.2 in the textbook and they read through it, there's going to be five practice problems after with an explanation of why they got the question wrong and why there might be a stronger answer. And so it can be, I think, a much stronger and meaningful use of a textbook as a support as opposed to a driver of, of curriculum.
Any other questions? All right, well, this, this was very helpful, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go Huskies.
And next is an update on the budget from Dr. Lutze.
That's right. We should be rounding the final bend on our regular budget updates here. And in that spirit, I'll keep it, keep it relatively short. But just to give a quick update to the board, if you are not aware, our final meeting with the town council will be Wednesday, April 5th, I believe at seven o'clock. And it's at that meeting that we anticipate the town council will be approving our budget. At the last meeting, those of you that were there know, we, there were no more questions for us. So there was an opportunity for any follow-up questions or further feedback and none came. So I think we're in a pretty strong position here and that the town council understands that the budget is, is very well put together and very lean and that I'm optimistic it'll move forward from there. Steve has been asking us, will there be any good news on the way to the final vote? So Sean and I met today with Joe. Sean, do you want to give a quick feedback around that?
Sure. Just before I make a comment, I just want to refresh everybody's memory as to where we are. Right now, the Board of, Board of Finance has approved an operating budget of 103.0, which is an increase of about 3.99 million, 4.02%. So related to our discussion with Joe Spurgeon today, hoping that with an update on our claims, claims information, we, we had hoped that we hear some good news. We didn't hear terribly bad news, but we didn't make much improvement, both in terms of potential for savings for not only this year, but for the full year 24 plan as well. And we'll continue to monitor it. You know, every month we'll have newer data, more complete data, and so we're hopeful that there's still some potential savings out there.
Yeah. Joe's, thank you, Sean. And Joe's feedback was, and advice was to leave the budget number where it is. He really anticipates if things break the way that he's expecting. Essentially, he's trending now off of only six months to get to our actuals this year. So it's a much tighter trend and it looks like we're going to be very close to where we had anticipated the claims to be coming in. So he's, he said it's sort of bad news. We'd hope that we'd be doing much better and have money to save, but it's consistent with years past and it's good news and it means that Joe's
Spot on.
Anticipated claim number is spot on as usual. Right. So there could still be a surprise here or there. So we obviously, Sean said we monitor it every week and, you know, we'll certainly report out to the board if there is one, but it looks like we're going to be right on the number as we finish out this, the year.
One question. The, the 4.02, that's without making the adjustment for last year's ISF, right?
That's without making an adjustment, right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's $1.3 million higher than it would have been.
Yeah.
So that would have brought us under, under three, correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
It would be somewhere in the high twos.
So this number, the 4.02 reflects essentially, you know, the $804,000 reduction from the Board of Ed approved budget.
Yep.
Which I think the accuracy of, of the projection, you know, to date indicates the importance of, you know, that ISF and that policy being, you know, just
That it's a strong process.
Yes. Thank you.
Can I just ask, are there any updates on where the town is on the ISF policy more generally and what they plan to do on their side?
Yep, we have not gotten any updates yet. What we're anticipating is once the town council approves the budget, then Sean and Anne will be able to connect and have some conversation about that. We did talk to Joe today about the possibility of creating a Board of Education policy around the ISF. He does work with other districts, as you know, and some of them do have policies that provide guidance for size of reserve overall, which would, for Joe would be three things. It would be the IBNR, the corridor, and then what he calls margin plus or minus. And it's actually a Board of Ed policy that, that drives some of that, what to do if there's more money at the end of the fiscal year versus not. And so we, we started talking about the potential of having Joe work with us with, with a resources committee to create a Board of Ed policy that would govern, or at least advise our approach to this, which might actually add another level of oversight.
Yeah.
So that it's something that's sort of self-governed by the board in doing that.
Good idea.
More to come.
Yeah, I think it's interesting, just, it's a good thing to remind ourselves of because it's so complicated.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it can be, it can be tough to remember what we've done in years past. So having a policy might be a, a good step.
Yeah, so he's going to send over a couple of examples and then he could come down and we can try to put something together to share with the board and see, see what you think.
For, I think that, that would be helpful, but I think just even informationally, the districts that do have it, just understanding how they operate, like how they deal with their corridor, that all, I think all of that information could just be helpful for resources and then ultimately the full board as we continue to
And that's the information that's captured in the policy? So sort of how, again, how they Yep, the specifics of it. And again, it's just a possibility, right? It's just another approach because also Sean and Anne will be talking, once the budget's through, about the other charge, which was to make some recommendations from the Board of Finance to the town on the Internal Services Fund and their management of that and the reserve. So I think we'll, we'll be at the table with that and we'll develop the best solution we can.
All right, thank you. And next up is an update on 220 Elm.
Sure. The update's going to be much shorter than the actual work that's gone in over the last couple of weeks since we met, but we are moving forward. The demo is nearly complete. The framing for the walls are, it's in, not the framing, but the outline, I guess is the better way to say it. The walls aren't up yet, but they're coming. The, as you know, it's not really one space, it's three different spaces because we've got the Board of Ed space and then also launch and the alternative program. So the building itself is unslabbed, so they've had to do some core drilling and other things like that. We're working very closely with the owner of the upstairs space because he's got some tenants moving in and doing the work. They're, they're starting their work at four in the morning, doing all the noisy work before eight o'clock and then, you know, sort of staggering it all that way. So it's all working very well. And Bill Ostman of the town has been overseeing the project on the ground every minute of every day and doing a great job with that. We've been in project meetings and being, and following up with them along the way. Couple of unforeseen conditions, but nothing we are not able to work around. There was some structural support in a wall that we didn't anticipate being there. So changing some of the filing needs and challenges around that, but we're, we're figuring it out. And we're working directly with Stanford Office Furniture to figure out the furniture layout of the space and anticipate being able to completely refurbish the Board of Ed offices with new, new furniture from Stanford Office within budget. And that will actually increase the functionality of the space a bit by having things that are really custom-designed for that instead of trying to retrofit what we currently have over there. I think it also benefits the police department because whatever we leave behind, as you know, the police will be moving into our offices when we vacate. So if we leave some good furniture there for them to use for the next couple of years, I think it's, it's to their benefit. And so our timing still looks like between July and August, they'll finish the student side first so we can get the students moved in. And then, so they'll be there before the start of the year is the plan and then we would go in, you know, when it's ready, but we do anticipate that being August. And on Wednesday, we have a moving company coming over to our central office now, just take a look at things and, and see what the move might look like. When you go into our office space, you see quite a few filing systems, you know, the, just big cabinets with lots, lots of files. And so we've been looking at the downstairs in 220 just as a place for longer-term storage. So things you might not need to access more than once a year, where you want to have them on site, but there's no room for them on the main floor. So we're going to look to move some of those cabinets over and, and put them directly into the basement. So we'll, we'll do some dehumidification down there also. The, Bill's been very, as I said, collaborative with it and cooperative. He's been calling whenever there's a question and working things through with the Board of Ed to try to accommodate our needs as best he can. So we're grateful for, for all Bill's effort there and so far, we're on track.
Great. Thanks.
Next up are our action items and the second read of the, the
Next up are our action items and the second read of the policy updates. So first is move to approve the revisions of the Board of Education Policy 5350, physical examinations and immunizations, as first moved and seconded by Ms. Parkill and Mr. Hayes, respectively.
So I'll just add briefly, the only addition since our meeting
There were two?
Uh, one, the only addition is the, at the bottom, you see the addition of Public Act 21-6, which was approved in 2021, and that's the public act that was approved that drove the need to make changes, and we corrected the spelling on the word midnight.
Okay. So we can just vote, right?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we'll move to approve revisions to the Board of Education Policy 5440, transportation of students in emergency situations, as first moved and seconded by Ms. Schwedell and Mr. Alves, respectively.
And that is unchanged from our meeting.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Next, we'll move to approve revisions to Board of Education Policy 5460, medications, as first moved and seconded by Mr. Hogan and Ms. Toll, respectively.
And the only change there is the change from Narcan to Naxalon, which is moving away from the brand name to the product, as we discussed.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. And last is move to approve revisions to Board of Education Policy 5461, food allergies, as first moved and seconded by Mr. Hogan and Mr. Naughton, respectively.
And that is unchanged from our meeting.
All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to comments from the public. Are there any public comments? None? Announcements in future business?
So I think everyone's future business is centered around spring break in three days, and I want to wish everyone a wonderful break and a happy holiday. The, I know we're all looking forward to that, and then when we return, we have our board meeting two weeks after our return, as we know. So that throws it up, changes the cadence a little bit as we go into May as well, so we'll take a look at the calendar. Do want to let the board know as well, sorry, with you around the portrait of the grad?
Yeah, sure.
Yep, that in conversation, given the timing of the year, where we are, and after some thought and conversation with Patel, and conversation with the executive team, we made the decision to move the portrait of the graduate process into the fall, thinking that this time of year, people are so busy, it'd be tough to really get the group and the availability that we'd like, and gives us the summer to kind of plan some things out and sometimes in between and what have you. So a little disappointed by that, but I think it's the right thing for us to do. The, as we said, sometimes you have to punt in order to get better field position, and I think this gets us better field position so that we can do it in the right ways for our district and for everybody else. So we're going to do that with our schedule, stay tuned, and I think the final deciding factor was, when we went to get space to actually have the meetings, we couldn't get the Wagner Room, we could not get the cafeteria, and the library was 50/50. So that just shows how busy everybody is, because there's going to be our kids, our parents, our community using the Wagner Room, using the cafeteria, using these other spaces at the same time. So I think it's the right move, so we're going to move that into the fall, so we'll talk about it more.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? Brendan, second? Bob, all in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.